Well, good evening, everybody. This is a meeting, a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Silky Pope, Council.
Danielle McKinney, Councilmember.
Jenny Poppy, Councilmember.
Amy Nisel, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Okay, anybody got any information items? Someone? All right. Well, let me just say this quickly. We hold council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents, no votes or formal actions are taken at our work sessions. These work sessions, as well as our meetings, are open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws, so that residents and others can observe councils' deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for a public comment during these times. If you wish to make a comment or to address council or the city administration, you can raise your hand if you're in the room, and after being recognized, you can just go over to the podium. You'll need to state your name, and we ask you to provide an address for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, we need your name and address if possible. We don't accept anonymous comments on Zoom. And finally, if you're watching on cable TV or on YouTube, you can just send us an email. Send the email to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So with the comments, if you could limit your remarks, please do limit your remarks to three minutes if possible. Speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. And we ask, as always, ask you to avoid disparaging or questioning the motives of others. In general, let's all be civil in our remarks and our comments. We're all neighbors here. So tonight, we've got an exciting work session. I've been dying to talk about this for quite some time, but it's actually a very serious matter. We're actually talking about some proposed revisions to Chapter 20, the zoning section of the city code. And those revisions need to be in place to ensure conformity with the new Prince George's County zoning ordinance was passed back in 2022. So there are some implications to these changes. We would be expanding our authority a bit, just in terms of taking on some additional authority that's enabled by the county zoning rewrite. And also, there's a question about the role of authority, just in terms of the review process, whether it's going to stay with the Board of Appeals or shift over to the Advisory Planning Board. So first, I do want to welcome City Manager Oswee Samorone, who's just returning from an ICMA conference.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening. We've got a pop quiz for you a little bit later to see what you picked up.
All right.
And so facilitating this discussion tonight, we have our Director of Planning and Community Development, Terry Ruby, along with Jamie Fear and Ryan Segwin of the Planning Department. So, Ms. Ruby, I think you probably have a, some remarks and maybe a PowerPoint presentation to sort of get us all keyed in on the subject. Welcome. It's nice to see you here tonight.
Thank you. We're glad to be here. It's not often here zoning in excitement. Well, get it there. But yes, we have a PowerPoint presentation, so if we can call that up and I can sort of just speak to the presentation outline why we do that. We'll be tag teaming this evening, and as you indicated, we're here really to talk about a draft legislation, zoning legislation that would repeal and reenact Chapter 20 of our code, which is our zoning code. Caveat by saying that the draft is not perfect. We know that. The city solicitor is currently reviewing that. We have questions of our own, so we'll be working with him as he has an opportunity to review it, to perfect it. It is modeled after the city of Bowie, who successfully got it through District Council and was enacted in July of this year. The city of College Park has yet to draft and adopt their legislation. I assume it'll be very similar. Oftentimes, we take the lead from those who successfully have gone through the District Council process, because it just makes it a lot easier and a smoother ride for everyone. So like I indicated, we expect revisions. We'll be bringing back, you know, revised draft, too, after we've gotten input from all the parties and we've been able to incorporate anything that comes out of this evening. We'll start off first by giving a sort of, I want to give a little boring, high-level overview of zoning. It's not something we do every day, and I know council's very familiar with it. I'm not sure everyone really understands it. And then Jamie and Ryan are going to introduce that authority that is available to us to assume. I'm not sure everybody's aware. We've only assumed a partial authority that we can. There are other authorities out there that we can assume, and through this legislation, we're proposing to do that. So they'll talk a little bit about what that is. We'll talk about what the purpose of the zoning draft legislation is, and we'll highlight some of the key points within that legislation. And then we'll talk appropriately about our next steps as well. So if I can go to the next slide. I thought I'd just start off by giving a little definition of zoning. And it's the process which by local governments divide land in different areas. And in Prince George's County, we call them zones. In some areas, they're called districts. And they establish certain rules and determine how each zone can be used and as well as it can be developed. So we talk about land uses, building size, height, setbacks, lot covers, density, signage, parking. That is all considered zoning functions. The purpose of this is to ensure compatibility of uses, manage growth and development, to protect property values, public health and safety, and to implement, obviously, those plans adopted by Prince George's County, like sector plans, growth plans, and so forth. A lot of people always question, like, why does Laurel have authority and we don't have authority and so forth? So just a little bit, historically, up until 1998, the county has had full planning and zoning authority, and that's basically through state statutes. There are two articles within the state statute. One is 25, which enables charter counties to enact planning and zoning laws. And then Article 28 is the one which actually created the regional district in 1927, and it basically created the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and delegated full planning and zoning authority to them, preempting municipalities like us from having the authority to do that. City Laurel, they have their own because they are not within the regional district. When the regional acts were passed, they were already practicing. My understanding is certain zoning practices in the General Assembly allowed them, since it was referenced in their charter, to maintain that authority. So that is a major difference between Laurel and the other municipalities within Prince George's County. And as, yes.
I was just wondering, I'm sorry. So why is it that in Montgomery County, some of the municipalities have that land use?
I was trying to research that. Again, I think it has to do with enabling legislation that Montgomery County was able to enact that then allowed those authorities to be delegated to those municipalities.
Now, Gethysburg and Rockville.
Yes, many of this. Yep. And as you all know, we historically argue every year down at State Legislature for enabling legislation, and we were successful in the late '90s where we were able to, there was enabling legislation that passed that allowed us to get authority over variances and departures, and we've had that since 1998. Since then, I think it was in the early '20s, additional legislation, enabling legislation was passed that allowed, and Jamie and Ryan will go over that, other authorities to, for us to be able to assume. We never assumed those authorities at that time, but as you'll see in the zoning legislations, we are proposing that we assume them at this time. It seems like a perfect time to do that. They don't really have a significant impact in terms of our history, in terms of hearing those types of cases, but I think we would all agree, any control the city can get over its own destiny is something that we should capitalize on. So that's why we're proposing that. And then finally, just briefly, as I indicated, it's the city code, Chapter 20, that outlines the city zoning authority. At that time, it was predicated on the previous prior Prince George's County zoning ordinance, and it outlines the processes and standards consistent with the county in terms of variances and departures. And Jamie will speak a little bit more to that on the next slide, actually, yes, on the next slide. So I'll go into the authority. So we can move. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So before I enter variances.
You had to press a button on top.
Very close to it. Okay. Terry was not that close.
I'm loud.
Okay. I'll try to be louder. So this slide just tells you what zoning authority the city can assume based on previous legislation and the updated zoning code. So as Terry mentioned, we have had authority over variances and departures since 1998, and I'm going to go into a little more detail about what those are, because we don't actually hear that many of them or haven't heard that many of them over the years, just to remind you. And just for reference, we looked up, since 1998, we believe we have heard about 26 variances and only six departures, two of which I think have happened in the last two years. So we had a rush of them over the last two years. What we could potentially be adding would be certification, revocation, and revisions of nonconforming uses, minor changes to approve to special exceptions, alternative compliance from the landscape manual. I know this sounds like a whole nother language, and we'll discuss all of these a little more in depth, and security exemption plans for fences and walls. So that would be what we would be adding. Next slide, please. So just to go over what variances typically are, they are modifications to density, bulk, or area requirements. They allow for modifications, and they must be due to hardship associated with the physical features unique to the property. They must be the minimum necessary to resolve that exceptional condition, so they can't really go above and beyond that. They cannot substantially impair the intent, purpose, and integrity of the general plan, which is set by the county, or any functional master plan, area master plan, or sector plan affecting the property. They must not substantially impair the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties. And I think for reference, I think most of the variances we've heard have been for decks.
Correct.
Correct? So that's typically what we're seeing when folks want to add a deck to their property.
Does that include things like parking, adequate parking spaces?
No.
That's a departure.
That would be a departure, and I will go over those. Parking is under departures. They may not be the result of actions taken by the property, so that physical feature that's unique to the property has to be how the property has been, but not caused by something that the property owner has done to the property. And currently, our process is that variances are heard by the city's Board of Appeals. Next slide, please. The departures are, we have subsets of the departures. So the overall definition is a reduction or modification of certain requirements of the zoning ordinance related to landscaping. Here's your parking and signage. And so we have essentially, it depends on how you break it down, three or four different types of departures that we have been hearing. There's two under departure from design standards. One is standards for landscaping and the buffering of properties. The other is standards for design of parking lots, but that is different than the departure from parking and loading standards, which is the number of parking and loading spaces required by the zoning ordinance. And you may recall, we just heard a departure from parking and loading standards for Maryland Trade Center III recently. And a departure from sign design standards is the last one. That is about the location, height, size, and number of signs on a property. The most recent departure from sign design standards that the city heard was for the Greenbelt Honda, when they were looking for a sign for the frontage of their property. And these are currently considered by the Greenbelt Advisory Planning Board, or APB. So the new county zoning ordinance defines major and minor departures. There's a very long table that you can, that we can refer to. And under the new zoning ordinance, a minor departure would be approved by, could be approved by the planning director directly. Major departure would be approved, heard and approved by the Advisory Planning Board under the proposed city ordinance. Next slide, please. So the required findings, according to the new zoning ordinance, the new county zoning ordinance, is that the departure falls within the threshold per the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the character of development and land uses on surrounding land. The departure typically compensates for some unusual aspect of the site that's somewhat similar to a variance, or the proposed development that is not shared by landowners in general and supports the objective or goal from the purpose and intent statements of the zone where it is located, or saves healthy existing trees, will not impose a danger to public health or safety. Any adverse impacts are mitigated to the maximum extent practical. The site is not subject to a series of multiple incremental departures, so we don't want to see a reduction from each development standard by the maximum allowed over the previous 20 years. So there's not a series of departures that occur for any one property. And for a departure for a standard required in the landscape manual, there cannot be any feasible proposal for alternative compliance, as defined in the landscape manual, which would exhibit equally effective design characteristics. So it can't be something that they would already be able to do under the landscape manual as it's currently written.
What's an example of the difference between a minor versus a major departure?
Great question. There's a pretty large table in the zoning code, and so I can give you, a minor departure would include, trying to see if there's one that's written in sort of plain language that's understandable. Off-street parking standards, for instance. So the number of off-street parking spaces required for development, something that would be considered a major departure would include the location of the off-street parking. So that's a little bit different, I guess, than the number. There's differences about buffer width standards, differences in facade standards. Those are all considered major departures. But because we have these four categories, it's different things under those categories. So related to design standards, sign standards, parking, and the landscape manual. I don't know if there's an easy way to say sort of what the major difference, major differences between a minor and major.
A lot of it comes down to the percentage of which you're asking for the exemption from the standard from.
Okay.
Let's see. This presentation's about 10 minutes long, I guess. Let's hold questions.
But that is all defined very specifically by the county zoning code. And there is a table that defines what is considered a minor departure and what is considered a major departure. So I don't, we would not be defining that ourselves. That would be defined by the county's code.
That's, I think, the most, what seems most important to me, is as long as, even if I don't understand what the difference is between minor and major, as long as there are guidelines.
Yes, yes. Next slide, am I turn it over to Ryan?
Thank you. My, what the slides I'm going to talk about here are the expansion of powers in the zoning ordinance that the city does not currently have. So there is no comparison in our existing code to look at, because we've never had these powers before. The first one that I'm going to go over is the certification, revocation, and revision of nonconforming uses. So in the county code, it kind of covers nonconforming uses and structures as the same thing. So an example of a nonconforming use would be, and I'm just going to make something up that has no connection to anything, but let's say you had a car dealership on a piece of property that's been on the property for 20 years, and it was enacted legally on the property, it was allowed by the zoning ordinance, and it was allowed in the zone at that time when it was put there 20 years ago. A new zoning ordinance comes along and changes the zone that they're located in or the use table that's allowed in that zone that suddenly doesn't allow a car dealership. So the use was installed there on the property legally, and the code changed while it was there. And so that is a nonconforming, a legal nonconforming use. An example of a nonconforming structure would be if you had a house that was built in the 1970s, let's say, and the front setback in the zoning ordinance at that time was 20 feet, or I'm sorry, let me, let's say the front setback was 15 feet, and the house was, got a building permit, and it was legally constructed at the 15-foot setback, and then a new zoning ordinance comes along and changes that front setback to 20 feet. That house would now be a legal nonconforming structure. It cannot, a new one could not be built using the old setback, but it's legally allowed to remain on the property because it was constructed legally at that time.
We're not just talking about commercial property. We're talking about residential.
We're talking about both.
Okay, okay. Nonconforming uses, I know this hot topic is accessory dwellings and whatnot, so.
If you had an accessory dwelling that was built legally under the previous zoning ordinance or any previous zoning ordinance, that would be, and it was legally constructed, that would be another nonconforming structure if it suddenly didn't meet the current code requirements. So the city has proposed to have the power to certify nonconforming uses and structures to remove that certification or revocation of that, of that status, or revising an existing nonconforming user structure. My understanding is that there are approximately six nonconforming properties in the city right now, and so I don't expect a rush of nonconforming certifications to come in, in the sense that that only applies to six current properties in the city. Next slide, please. The next new power would be minor changes to approved special exceptions. There are three special exceptions in the city right now, or three properties that have existing special exceptions, one of which is the, I forgot the name of the daycare, but the play, play?
LOL.
Oh, LOL Childcare at Greenbelt, or at Beltway Plaza. That is an existing special exception that the council heard a while back. So under this new ordinance, it would allow only minor changes. New applications for special exceptions or major ones, I'll get into that in a second, would still go to the county for approval and wouldn't come, or we would still get referrals to make comments, but we wouldn't have approval authority. And so a minor one would, that would require board approval, would be an increase of no more than 15% in the gross floor area of a building, or the increase of no more than 15% of the land area covered by the structure other than the building. Anything higher than 15% would then, as a revision, would go to the county and not us. There is an option to allow for planning director approval, which is, limits the gross floor area or land cover changes to 10% or less. It also covers any changes to basically erosion control, drainage, and sediment control. New, like if the building is being renovated with our new architectural plans, any sort of engineering related to grading utilities, stormwater, and any other elements, parking and loading, revisions to the landscape plan or any other plan element determined by the planning director to have minimal effect on the overall design. I think it's important to recognize that special exceptions are essentially uses that are allowed in a particular zone, but are, but could be detrimental to the public good or surrounding neighborhoods. So the county approves those special exception uses under certain conditions with certain features that help mitigate any negative impacts. So any sort of revision, that's why they would look at, parking design or landscape design, or that could be screening or something, that's why that's important to look at when these things get revised.
So when there's a exception request, special exception, and it goes to the county, and it's something that the city is actually favorable towards, but the county denies it, do we have any pull or sway in moving something forward?
Are you talking about new applications?
Yeah, new application. Or no, an existing, existing application.
So if it would be a minor change that I've outlined here under the proposed legislation, the city would have complete control to deny that or approve it, as long as it met the requirements as a minor change. It would, it would, if it was over 10%, it would go to the Advisory Planning Board for approval, and if it was less than that, then it would, it could potentially go to the director if it's less than 10%. If it's above that, then it would go to the county, and the county would then refer that to us as for comments, but they would be the approval authority in that particular case. Yes, for new applications.
Right, right. So something goes to the county, they deny it, but it's something the city actually wants to enable. We can comment, but we don't really have any authority, much authority, in trying to change it.
Correct. At the moment, we have zero authority, and the proposed legislation would allow a modest increase in the power that we have, but wouldn't apply in that particular case. Next slide, please. The third new power is an alternative compliance from the landscape manual. So this will mainly apply to commercial properties where any development that's proposed is required to meet the landscape manual that's adopted by Prince George's County. And when it discusses alternative compliance, it may mean, you know, changes in the type of vegetation, maybe there are some unusual space limitations and lot shapes that make meeting the landscape manual requirements difficult, and applicants can propose changes or alternative compliance. Like I can't get to this, but I can, I'll trade you for this that's reasonably, like a straight across trade. So, and if there's no way to do that, then the departure approach is also an option. So it's really, it's really a one-to-one trade in terms of, in terms of finding alternative compliance. It's not doing less or doing more. It's about finding another option, basically. As I said, this is also a power that our current code does not have. Next slide, please. The last slide I'm going to talk about is a special exception plan for fences and walls. I'm not super familiar with this, but this type of application would be for properties that are of a high-security nature, where an applicant can propose electric fence, fences higher than what the county code allows for, barbed wire, razor wire, and we would have control over that. The county Board of Appeals or the municipality can approve those plans. I'm unfamiliar if any of those types of properties are in the city.
No, I believe this is a new section of the zoning code. I don't believe it was in the prior code, so.
I do not believe this would apply to federally owned properties.
It would not.
Because they are exempt from the zoning ordinance in its entirety. So, so this would not be a federal, this not apply to federal properties. I also don't expect a rush of. I also don't expect a rush of security plans for walls and fences to come into the city as well. But we do have that power proposed in the legislation. I'll let Terry wrap things up with the highlights and the purpose of the legislation. And if there's any questions for me, you're welcome to ask them at the end.
So I indicated you have this nice 87, 82 pages of zoning here. The main purpose, as we said, was to update our chapter 20 to align with the new Prince George's County ordinance and the omnibus bill that passed after that amended certain aspects of the zoning ordinance, which was enacted in April 1st, 2022. And what this does is it reflects the delegation of powers to the city that is provided for within the new zoning ordinance. And those are those delegations that Ryan and Jamie just spoke to. One thing that's really important to preface is it does not allow us to adopt our own code. We are bound to adopt the code of Prince George's County. Whether we, if we wanted to be more restricted, less restricted, we are bound to basically follow the standards, policies and procedures within the Prince George's County code. So that's why you'll see some things in here, you might scratch your head. It's, it's a result of, it's reflected what's in the code, county code. And the main, another purpose is it's, it's to promote efficient development review, support community and economic vitality. I believe the new zoning ordinance, as you know, was to modernize the Prince George's County zoning ordinance, but also to streamline certain functions, to promote development within the county. So, and that's what you'll see reflected in this new zoning ordinance. To highlight some of the key points in it is, I think we've already talked enough about the new powers that'll grant the city and that it'll, you know, actually, if you could go to the next slide, I'm sorry, the highlights. And that adopts the procedures and findings of the county ordinance. But what it also does is it transfers the authority to decide and approve certain application types from the city council to the advisory planning board or the planning director. Historically, with variances and partners, the planning director was advisory to the advisory planning board. Under the new zoning ordinance, as, as Ryan and Jamie spoke to, there are certain, certain minor revisions that a planning, would go to the planning director to decide. And then the advisory planning board is the decision maker, as we're proposing, for all other functions. And the council serves as an appellate role, which I want to say frankly, that's what you serve as now. And if you recall, we've, as Jamie spoke to, I think we've had 26 variances and four, six departures, all of which were put on, placed on the city council's consent agenda. And that's because under our current zoning legislation, the city council could only take up, if you will, a discussion on an application if the vote of the board was not unanimous and/or somebody filed what we call an oral argument or an appeal. So in essence, you sort of served as that appellate in for variance and departures. And this really would also carry that function on into the new zoning functions as well. And then lastly, what we're proposing, and I, I want to preface this by saying I did have a discussion with the board of appeals chair, and I know he shared information, so this isn't news to them. They're aware that we're making this recommendation. I met and discussed with him why we thought that it was warranted. But the recommendation within this code, this legislation is to transfer all zoning functions to the advisory planning board. And mainly because we just believe they're best suited for this role, given their advisory responsibilities as they stand now in terms of land use plans and development proposals to the city council, as well that they were briefed on the new zoning ordinance. They are more familiar with the new zoning ordinance and actually just zoning in general. Then our board of appeals just given the functions that are inherent in their responsibilities that are delegated to them under the city code. We also think just for continuity and ease of our processing of these applications, just having one board that needs to be familiar with the processes and part of the processes will allow for a more seamless review of these applications. So we are proposing that. There is nothing in the county code that states that it has to be our board of appeals or it has to be our advisory planning board. We have the opportunity to define what board carries out these functions and which functions they are. And then last, the last slide is just essentially outlines and who would have the decision making, who has the appeal authority. And then you can see on certain ones, certification, nonconforming uses, revocation, revision of nonconforming uses and minor revisions, that there is opportunity within the zoning ordinance under certain circumstances for the, the city council to elect to review those. So this pretty much mirrors the processes by which the various, the zoning hearings, examiner or the, the county planning board and the county, the district council serving as a county council all serve when it comes to planning and land use authority. So that really is the end. I will just, I, I had to go over action steps, but just to talk a little bit about what's in the zoning ordinance, when I said processes, a lot of things you'll see is new to us. There are neighborhood, the neighborhood meetings where the, based on certain applications, the applicant is required to participate in a neighborhood meeting. There's pre-application meetings that talks about registering of HOAs and responsibilities to notify HOAs of cases involving their property, but also to notify residents. We need to establish a resident registry as well as an HOA registry where we would be informing them of cases in front of, of the city or filed with the city. A lot of that would be through website. And it's probably, you know, something that we've had a goal to do prior to this is to highlight in the planning and development webpage, development reviews, the status of them and so forth. But this basically mandates those processes be part of our zoning authority. And then otherwise it just, within there, it stipulates what the findings must be for us to grant those applications approval authority. And then it talks about appeals and obviously the ultimate appeals to the circuit court. We're very proud of the fact that we've never had an appeal of our, of a departure or a variance. I know our neighboring jurisdictions have. So I think that highlights our ability to process these and to educate our applicants on the, whether they should pursue the, the project or work with them on finding alternatives that allow them to be in compliance. And that's our main goal is when we, is to work with applicants. And when they come in and try to make the process as simple. This is quite a process for a homeowner that just wants to put on a deck. Just them understanding what a site plan is and what zoning is, is, is difficult enough. So we really try to hold their hand through the process. And I think that's one, also another benefit of us assuming this responsibility is we have the capability to do that. And we're very well aware of our uniqueness and some of the challenges that homeowners have. And we've successfully been able to, you know, work with them, not always, you know, maybe the outcome they wanted, but compromise outcomes and so forth. So we, while this changes a lot of things, it won't change the way we do business, which is to assist our, both our commercial and our residents with navigating what can be sometimes a very lengthy and some believe cumbersome process for maybe a minor ask. And I think that is one of the positives of this is recognizing that certain minor revisions and variances shouldn't have to go through the entire review process. There should be a certain trust in your planning staff to be able to process those so that they can be expeditiously processed and the project, you know, can come to fruition much sooner than our typical, some of these typical cases that can take up to a year to, to, to go navigate through the process. So just, if we go to the next slide, final action steps, which we have a lot to work through, is that we would work with the city attorney to finalize the draft. And then we would place the, once we have a draft that, that the city attorney and staff and the city manager and all are comfortable with, we would place them on a regular meeting agenda. Per Prince George's County requirements, we, you are required to have a public hearing on the ordinance before it's approved. Then it would be placed on council's regular meeting agenda for second reading and adoption. Finally, we would transmit the, to the, the ordinance to clerk of the county council because it requires the district council to approve it. I will say that I believe Bowie trans, submitted theirs, I want to say it was February 25th and it got adopted in July 25th. So I expect that process may, may take some time because their legal council has to review it and so forth. I'm hoping it'll be a little expeditious because we are modeling it after Bowie's. And then some of the things that we need to do internally, would I see these really being more concurrent with the rest of the process, is obviously we would have to prepare our process manuals, we have to create applications, a fee schedule resolution for city council. And then we would, would need to work with our advisory planning board to make sure that they're comfortable with the ordinance, train them in it, because a lot of these terminology and zonings, they have not seen. We, we, like I said, we have not, I've, I've never in my years here have seen an alternative compliance application. It's 31 years, I've never seen a revision to such special exception. I've seen new special exceptions, but neither here or there, we need to be equipped to handle them if they do come in, which will acquire extensive amount of training with our advisory planning board and also formulating new processes with them. As, you know, a major stakeholder is undertaking sort of our procedures and policies and integrating these new functions into those. They currently have policies for variance and departures. But again, they're preference off the old, the prior zoning ordinance, so we would need to revisit them. So that can happen concurrently. But all said and done, we have a lot to do to get where we, to the finish line. But I think the very first thing is getting an ordinance that we're all comfortable with and getting that transmitted to the county council, because while we're doing that, we can do all these other things and be ready once it's enacted. And with that, that concludes our presentation. I, we hope that we didn't bore you too much because we know something can be a little boring.
I've got a few questions and I see Mayor Proton has her hand up. Then we'll go to the public after taking some questions and comments from council. Oh, okay. There you are. Well, let me just, with the expansion of authority, I'm wondering, taking on these additional responsibilities as allowed by the zoning rewrite in April 2022, do we have to actually, can we take on the authority without implementing it fully? You, you mentioned preparing manuals and putting some new processes in place. But in the, taking this action, can we sort of adopt this expanded authority without necessarily taking on all the aspects of it at the same time?
I mean, now, once it's enacted by the district council, that authority gets granted to us.
Okay, so it's all.
So we will, we will, it will be on us, incumbent on us to make sure that we understand when it will be adopted and enacted by the county council and whether that means we need to delay that process a little bit in order for us to be able to have everything in place. That's what we'll have to do. But well, once it's enacted, will all those functions come to the city? I mean, we can, we could ask for them incrementally, but I don't think that's wise. I think we should just ask for them all through one zoning bill.
Okay, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, just a quick one, because I noticed on that decision-making authority table that both the planning director and APB were noted as having a decision-making authority for minor revisions to special exceptions.
Yes, and then within the zoning ordinance, once again, it goes into certain, what that means, when the, I, I couldn't put it all on the table, but there's certain circumstances that warrant a planning director and then well-defined within the zoning ordinance is when it would have to go to the advisory planning board. And it really has to do with the level of the, the revision.
Okay, so there's sort of subcategories of minor revisions, okay.
I'd also want to note that since we'd only have authority to do minor revisions to special exceptions, that would be existing special exceptions and currently that only applies to three properties in the city, so.
Councilmember McKinnney.
Thank you. I was wondering if you anticipate, in order to finalize the legislation, if there would be an impact to your sort of staffing plan? And if there is potentially an impact to what may be required fiscally to finalize this in the upcoming budget year?
No, I don't think fiscally there'll be an impact. I, and from a staff perspective, knowing really our, our budget challenges currently, I think what it will be more of what we do and we've got, we do pretty well these days is prioritization. When an application comes in and, and it's very prescribed within this, like unlike our various departures where we could take time if we didn't have staff to assign to it, it's very prescribed in here, the turnaround time. So it, we just have to be, we have to remind everybody that they maybe need to be flexible in our work program and certain things that are delegated to it and make these a priority over other things. We'll know more once we, like, once we actually get the authority. But again, we had this concern with variances departures and we, we've had six departures since 1998. Now, I said that and now we're going to have 20 next year. You know, so I, it would, it's going to be hard to tell, but I'm, I'm hoping that we can just do it through resigning of our program.
So once again, with that delegation of authority, with the, the new county executive and the new director of, executive director of Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, there's been a lot of talk about trying to streamline the approval process, streamline some of these processes. So once the authority is delegated to us, does the district council in Maryland National Capital Park and Planning still have the power to, to amend those powers that have been delegated?
Well, the county, the county, the county council's thing is the district council has to approve this ordinance, but the zoning ordinance allows for us to assume these responsibilities. So as of right now, I feel fairly confident that, you know, as Bowie was successful, that, that what it won't allow us to do obviously is to prolong any of their review processes as outlined in the zoning ordinance. If it says 30 days, that's how long we have 30 days to do it.
Yeah, I guess I was kind of asking if, if, if the decision is made to streamline some processes and we've already been delegated to certain authorities, would we also have to shorten or skim over some aspects of?
I would, my assumption would be that within enacting, and I don't know this, but with, when they enact any revisions, they may very well then within their stipulate that then the municipalities would enact them too. And I actually prefer language like that rather than have to amend our zoning ordinance every time or then our ordinance every time. And that's one thing we're going to be talking with Jason regarding, whether we should have language in there that will amend this as the county amends them, because as we all know, and they've highlighted several times, as a new zoning ordinance, they expect to have to amend it. And so certainly it would be streamlined for everyone if we would have language in there that allowed ours to amend with the counties. And we, we've done, you know, we do that in other areas of our code too.
Right. So two more quick questions. One just has to do with, you know, in Greenbelt in particular, there was a lot of thought put into old Greenbelt, Roosevelt Center and the overlay zone that exists to protect Roosevelt Center and GHI in particular. So would any of the delegated powers that we have, impact the protections that are provided in the overlay zone now? Particularly with variances, with variances on parking, landscaping and things like that?
The impact would be like, say, somebody within, let's just say somebody within GHI wanted a variance to, to put in addition beyond that, that's permitted under the neighborhood designs. And my understanding is they could apply for a variance, then that would mean that authority lies with us. But we would still be required to implement the county zoning ordinance and their criteria and make the same findings as the county. So only as far as somebody wanting to may, have relief of something within that, that they're entitled to have relief under a variance or departure.
Yeah, and you mentioned six variances in Greenbelt and maybe two or three or four of them might be in the GHI.
We've done 26 variants.
26.
Most of which are in Greenbelties, because we know we have larger houses there on smaller lots.
Right.
And there, even when, I want to say Greenspring was built, let's just say at least 12 or 13 variances were granted at the time that was developed to the contractor for, for decks. So they're the majority, almost the majority we've seen. We've had one or two in historic Greenbelt, some I think related to carport and, and in addition, and in addition. And, and they're almost all from rare ends or side yard setback, is all that I recall.
I was thinking more about some of the sheds and accessory dwellings, you know, how, how big can you?
Well, accessory dwellings aren't currently permitted, so that, that's, you know, we don't address those at this time. The sheds, they have a much smaller setback, they only had to be two feet. And if, so as long as they're within two feet, they're, they're, they're a lot, you know, allowed, permitted under the zoning ordinance. If they're not, then they would have to seek relief from the zoning ordinance. And then we would act on those under the prescribed in the zoning, in the chapter 20.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, but let's go Mayor Proton, then we'll go to Michael and Astralis.
Are the, putting the, the, when people have installed a level two EV chargers on the street, is that a departure or a variance, is that something else?
No, that's a right of, construction, a right-of-way permit.
Okay, so that's a different thing.
Yep. And we, we have, when we've developed a memory and a MOU under that process for this. this particular situations.
Okay.
And other council questions? Let's go to Mr. Hartman.
Michael Hartman, Two Court, Gardenway. I have a question about depart, departures and granting them. If someone wants to have a departure from, let's say, parking or landscaping, for example, the number of spaces designated for people with disabilities as a function of the number of parking spaces, for example, or in landscaping, if the approach to a building has a rise in slope of over 5%, it needs to be treated like a ramp with handrails and landings. So in those two situations, granting the departure would stray from federal guidelines. And I'm wondering what, what kind of, of action is, is required in that interaction between the federal requirements on accessibility for people with disabilities and the departures of those and other, I'm sure there's other areas too, but those are the two that came to mind immediately. So.
I can take, I can take that. It's a great question. So generally speaking, in terms of laws like this, the, the state laws and the federal laws will trump local, any local, local law. In the city, or in the, in the case of the city of Greenbelt, we don't have any accessibility, handicap accessibility laws on the books. So in that particular case, the federal law would take hold. So, so say the director, the, the APB wouldn't be able to, or approve a departure that was in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act or any other federal law.
Okay. Before, I want to thank the council and all the staff that always shows up to work sessions and, and extra, over and above a nine-to-five job of the staff especially for showing up for all these different kinds of work sessions and meetings. It seems you're always here. And not only your staff, Terry, but in, in the general staff for the city. It's really neat. Thank you.
Mr. Orling, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I cannot recall precisely, but nearly 20 years ago, I was engaged somewhat in a discussion within GHI about what additions could be permitted. And I had thought back then that if it passed GHI's approval and there was some contest ongoing as to whether it would be approved by GHI, but that the county, as a matter of course, deferred to GHI. Was, am I wrong in remembering that?
No, you're not wrong in remembering that, but when the neighborhood overlay conservation zone was approved, enacted back in, was after the new ordinance, so let's just say 23-ish, then that set certain requirements and restrictions, as you, if you will, on the size of additions within GHI and other, and other, like, and roof height and so forth. So it sets certain restrictions.
So going forward, the county will play a larger role in determining additions to GHI units than, than in the past?
Yes, they have to look at them for conformance with the neighborhood overlay conservation zone.
But the city won't be playing a role in that.
Well, they are also required to get a building permit from us, so we will also review the neighborhood conservation overlay zone to ensure that there wasn't any errors made in the approval, or disapproval, but we only see the approvals of, of additions and/or anything else that's subject to the neighborhood overlay.
In the past, was a GHI member who won approval from GHI to do an addition, was a building permit required from the city in the past?
Both Prince George's County and city for as long as I've been here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. There's a question online from Jay Davis, and she was asking about the Board of Appeals, just in terms of what duties and responsibilities will remain with the Board of Appeals. I know there's some talented individuals on that Board of Appeals. They don't really get to, don't get a lot of work, but they've got some great construction experience and skilled trades and whatnot.
They will retain their original function for the reason which they were formed, which was, is to hear appeals from the, our housing code, property maintenance code. And in fact, that's why the one board that actually gets paid because they are, their job is to hear appeals and they are the decision maker at that time on, on appeals. So, for example, we, we've been very fortunate on not having any appeals, it's been 35, 40 years, from any of the violations, but if we were to cite a property under, one example, we worked it out, was say Greenway Shopping Center and the condition of their, this was years ago, their pavement. And we cited them and gave them a certain amount of time to come into performance, to address imperfections, potholes and so forth. They took exception to our finding and our violation and they started the process of filing an appeal. Like I said, we, we worked out a phasing plan for those improvements, understanding the financial constraints. But that would be, if we didn't work that out, that would have gone to the Board of Appeals to decide whether to uphold or not the violation and the findings of our inspectors. So, and that's a very important function and, and so that's, that's the function they will retain. And you're correct, we haven't met in a couple of years because we have not heard a variance in quite a while. And like I said, we haven't heard any appeals.
Right. Thank you very much.
Not on.
So, I was wondering about the proposal with the, the shift in authority to the planning director and to the advisory planning board and council having sort of an appellate role, I think is what you call it. And I do like being able to, to see these questions on the consent agenda, although certainly council doesn't need to weigh in and generally wouldn't, but just as a general thing, I kind of like having the opportunity to, to see those come by. What did you call that? Elect to review?
There are certain functions that have, the council has the option to elect to review, yes, use anyways.
Okay. So, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, although presumably part of the processes that be, that were developed could be at least notification of council when these are, when these things are happening, just for awareness.
Certainly, well-
We would know, we would know about them even if we're not a decision-making body anymore.
Yeah, I believe somewhere in here is something about sort of a weekly report. Now, ours probably wouldn't be weekly, but if we were to receive one, we certainly would, would provide notification in our weeklys that we are processing an application. It also will be available on the city's website to anyone who's interested as well. We can certainly alert if there's, you know, a new post.
Okay. Yes.
Good evening. Ben Friedman, Chair of Advisory Planning Board, Nine League View Circle. I just wanted to say that we are ready to implement the new responsibilities if they are implemented, I guess. So, just put it out there.
Very good.
Yeah, we concur with, with the planning department.
With the training, what, what sort of training would you anticipate for APB and would that be, would there be some requirement for ongoing training or onboarding new members?
Well, there is required training per state law now. So, so was it, every member is, we have developed one that's unique, that the state puts one together, the state planning commission, because we're unique, because we don't have planning and zoning authority, we have developed one that is, reflects our, our zoning authority, our processes, our relationship with the county. We will have to update that to include any, any of these new functions.
So is that the training that is available by the association of planners or something?
No, this is one that we've developed that's unique to Greenbelt. We have it on CD-ROM currently.
Yes.
We have it and it's a very, very good training and actually every member of council is required to take it.
Okay.
As well as any member of the advisory planning board or any board that has any role in decision-making as it relates to land use authority. So, we are going to work with getting it transferred into a more user-friendly format.
I was about to say.
Since our last CD-ROM is just removed from our GIM's office.
Exactly, exactly. I think, I think I took that, but you know.
Yes, you did. You took it.
A lot of people, a lot of people don't have those CD-ROM players.
Yeah, we're required to register everybody with the state once you, once you take it. So they should, so. I do have all the states.
Oh, it was more than one. It was like a, a pack of ten or something.
Well, it is more, it's a little bit of a series. It's a little long.
Okay. Well, council, any comments on the text, any changes in the wording of this proposal that's come to us? No?
I'm glad to have the experts reviewing it because I, I will confess, I did not read the entire ordinance. I read the memo and the presentation. I did not read the entire 80-page ordinance. But what I did read of it, I am glad that, that those with more expertise are reviewing it because it was very dense.
It's very dense.
Pop quiz?
I guess I'm going to fail the quiz.
Councilmember Poppy.
What do you anticipate to bring the ordinance before council?
That's a good question. I know Jason needs some time to, to review it. I think I had indicated to him, if he could please review in November, then we, him and I could work to perfect it in December. I'm going to say January would be my goal. A lot of it depends on what kind of feedback we receive from the city's attorney because we have questions ourselves. Even though we know it was enacted, there's some, still some language in there that we find conflicting that we want to address. So, you know, let's say give me until February. And then if I'm earlier, you know, that's great, but.
Yeah, I am a bit concerned though that there may be some, from the county review, maybe some changes. It was a new county executive, you know, it's a real commitment to streamlining some of these processes. Wouldn't, wouldn't surprise me at all if there are some shifts in some of the timelines that are provided for reviewing variances, departures and whatnot.
To date, we haven't seen any legislation come through and that will take some time for them to get through their processes, but we'll be monitoring it as well. Like I said, work to provide language in there that would allow us to just adopt any of the, you know, no, you know. We've always advocated that, you know, why we, we, we support streamlining. It needs to be able though to accommodate our, you know, council schedules, our board schedules and so forth. And so that, that'll be something we'll be monitoring and advocating for. But we understand, I think the real goal is, is looking at the permitting process and streamlining that. And I think we can all agree, there's improvement that can be done with that. I haven't heard as much about the streamlining the zoning because that was one of the intents when it was adopted, enacted, was to provide streamlining within it. And that's why you'll see the planning director having authority that once did not have.
I was going to mention too, that one of the sort of nuances in the zoning, the county zoning ordinance is that any variance applications that are, that are in conjunction with another development application actually don't come to the city. They stay with the county. So for instance, if there was a site plan for a new shopping center, let's say, and that also needed a variance for, as part of that site plan review, those two applications would be handled by the county as a package and wouldn't get sent to us. So, so we would be getting those standalone variances and not like being involved in the, in the larger process of development applications.
Ironically, departures are not like that. But I could see an argument being made that departure should be treated that way too, but to date, they're not. They have, somebody has to come to us first, get a departure until, and their application will not be accepted by the county until we grant that departure.
Okay. Mr. Somerong, what do you think of all this?
I, I'm, I'm trying to piece together the timeline because we have multiple projects or at least two projects that are running, that are running here. We have done the vast majority of the work on the recodification of the city code.
Right.
One of the things that's pending is the zoning, the zoning legislation. So I'll, I'll get with the team and we'll talk through what, what makes sense. Right now, we had waited to bring the, the recodification of the code to council for approval until we made some progress on the zoning legislation. But we may be in a position where, you know, we, we've been working on the result, the recodification of the code for over a year now. And I think council, I'm, I'm certainly eager to get that project done. We could complete the right recodification, either we come back with the, with the zoning legislation.
Do you see that happening before the end of the year?
If we, if we choose to treat them as two separate things, we could, we, we're ready with the draft of the recodification. We presented the, the initial draft to council. Our solicitor has reviewed it. So we're, we're essentially ready to go with that portion.
Okay. Well, let's see, are there any additional questions or thoughts from council? We're hearing none. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I talked my, our process. Do you, does council have a preference whether we complete the recodification of the, of the city code and come back with the zoning legislation or you want to just treat it as one, one package? The benefit of treating it as one, one project is that when we get our new or new code books, it's, everything's in that book. So if you rely on that print book for what the latest version of the code is, then it's good to get it done as one project. On the website, it doesn't matter. The website will be, would be, the, the new code will be digitized and will be searchable. Any, any changes made to it after it becomes digitized, the, the changes are much easier to incorporate.
Right. Things have changed so much over the past decade with, with books and whatnot. I imagine at one time, printing that city code book, you probably printed, I don't know, 20 or 30 copies, maybe more than that. But now we might only need two or three because it is digital. It's more easier to kind of maintain and update.
I, I, from, in the past, we, we were going to print more than two or three copies. We want each council member to have one copy and then select copies. The planning director would get a copy. My office retains a copy. Several copies needed. Jay Davis has requested a copy. Or I suggested I would give it as a gift to her, but.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I guess the, thinking about the timing, because that would mean if we wait till we have the zoning done, if we're, if we approve it in February, if it's ready in February or maybe early in March, and if Bowie submitted theirs in February of this year and didn't get approved till July, that could mean we're looking at quite some time before, if we wait for the zoning to be in it. I don't know. I mean.
Because you need a first reading, then you need a public hearing, then you need a second reading, then you submit it to the county.
And then we have to wait.
And then depending on when you submit it, hopefully they won't be in recess. Hopefully it'll be fourth then. But, you know, it depends on when they, they are able to take it up.
It sounds like it's not going to happen this year.
No, no, well, clearly not. If, if we're not going to get the legislation presented to council before January or February, then it seems like we wouldn't get it approved by the county until, it sounds like July or August potentially, if it runs in about the same time as Bowie. That seems like a long time to wait on the rest of the recodification that we've had ready for a while. So although it would be nice to have it cleaner with the, maybe we can, I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll have to do a new, after we do the, after we get the zoning code added, we can print a new book for at least planning that has the zoning code in it.
Or the way, bind it in such, just like, in such a way that that just chapter can be inserted into the, the way in which it's binded.
Books the way they're printed now and, and, and I know this, Wood knows this very well because she has to attach the supplementos to all of our other codebooks. There's a sleeve that can be added to the bind, the bind book that we need supplemental, just attached to the back.
It doesn't seem to me like we want to wait until August to do the rest of the recodification. But that's, that's my opinion.
And I kind of agree. It seems like we've been talking about this for about a year, as you said.
In the project, when we took, when we designed the project or started work on it, we knew it would be an 18-month process. So we are running up on that.
Very good.
Exceeding that timeline.
Well, Mr. Ruby, I want to thank you and the team for the presentation tonight and all of the thought that goes into reviewing these new requirements and new authorities that may be delegated to us from the county. So it's exciting time. It's going to be interesting to see county council, they're going to come back and actually take a look at the rewrite itself at some point in 2022. They haven't done that yet. But I think, I think the work that you're doing now will position us very well, very well to take on these new responsibilities and possibly even more. So anywhere we can get more permitting responsibility, is that something we would even want?
Oh, I say that's a topic, a disgusting topic for another evening. So, I, I think there, there's a, you know- I, I, I think there, there's a, you know, a lot of moving pieces there, a lot of nuance there. I will say, I know City College Park is, has been working to try to take on a very small piece of that to begin with. I don't believe they've been successful to date, I think they're still working through that. I think from our perspective, we've sort of discussed as a little city manager, we need to look at what the financial implications in doing that is because you need experts in pretty much every field to do that. It was not something that we have on staff. So, you know, I think you have to outweigh, outweigh all those, those pieces and really take a look at them all. So I do know, like, College Park right now is doing, they hired a third party to come in and do an assessment of their, of their department. So I think, you know, it'll be interesting to see what those findings are because I think some of them we can take a look at as well.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you so much for all your good work, really, really appreciate you, thank you. And if there's no additional business at hand, why don't we go ahead and call it a night?